Good evening. We have a regularly scheduled meeting that's going to begin in a little bit, a little bit under 10 minutes. Beforehand, though, I'd like to announce the committee appointments for next year as council president. First, I want to thank my colleagues for entrusting me with this position for another year. Councilor Allen has the copies of the appointments that he's now circulating. This is the worst part of being council president. It's a very difficult job, signing committee assignments, but I try to do it fairly and evenly, and I hope that everybody will, you know, make the best use of their time and talents based on the appointments that I've given. So, I'll read them aloud while you folks can absorb them, while Councilor Allen is passing them around. The Finance Committee will be chaired by Councilor Allen. Councilor Rook and Councilor Twigs will also be members of that committee. Councilor Ramos will be the chair of the EcoDev Committee with Councilors Gomez and Hurst as members. The Public Safety Committee will be chaired by Councilor Ash with Councilor Shea and Hurst as members. General Government Committee will be chaired by Councilor Hurst with Councilor Bud Williams and Allen as members. The Maintenance and Development Committee will be chaired by Councilor Walsh with Councilor Bud Williams and Gomez as members. The Health and Human Services and Veterans Affairs Committee will be chaired by Councilor Gomez with Councilor Edwards and Marcus Williams as members. Civil Rights and Race Relations Committee will be chaired by Councilor Twigs with Councilors Ramos and Allen as members. The State and Federal Relations Committee will be chaired by Councilor Bud Williams with Councilor Edwards and Walsh as members. The Committee on Elder Affairs will be chaired by Councilor Marcus Williams with Councilors Twigs and Walsh as members. And the Audit Committee will be chaired by Councilor Rook with Councilors Shea and Ramos as members. The Special Permit Review Committee will be chaired by Councilor Shea with Councilors Twigs and Gomez also as members. Then, there's some other appointments here which are not full city council exclusively committees. The REO Committee will be chaired by Councilor Edwards with Councilor Allen as an appointment, continuing from last year. The Capital Improvement Committee, the council gets one appointee to that, I am appointing Councilor Rook for that purpose. The School Building Commission, the council gets one appointee, I am appointing Councilor Shea to that position. And the Animal Control Chairperson will be Councilor Edwards. There are two special committees which I am keeping from last year, ad hoc committees which will remain. One is the Young Professional Committee, and I am appointing Councilor Williams, Marcus Williams, to that, our newly youngest member. And the Labor Advisory Committee formerly chaired by Councilor Concepcion will now be chaired by Councilor Ash. So, with that, I think it's going to be an exciting year. We've got a lot of work ahead of us, and I'm excited to work with each and every one of you to make sure that it's a good year for us and for the, for our constituents in the City of Springfield. So, with that, we've got some new seating assignments. Councilor Hurst has the unenviable task of being in seat number one. And, we have a few minutes, Mr. Clerk, before we can get started? We do. So, we will, we'll wait another four minutes, and then we'll start our meeting. Okay?
Wayman, there seems to be a real...
I should also ask, we have public speak-out, only one person signed up for public speak-out this evening. I don't see her in attendance, but in case she's hiding somewhere. Michael Ann Bucy, Michael Ann, are you here to address us on crosswalks at the library?
Do you feel...
Okay. We'll give Michael Ann a couple of minutes, and if she doesn't show up, we will begin our meeting promptly at 7:00. Okay, we're going to call this meeting to order?
Very close.
Well, yeah, she's...
Good evening, everybody. Will the council and our guests please take your seats? Please rise for a moment of silence. Please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Justin Hurst.
Present.
President. Kennedy Shea. Epsom E. Henry Twigs.
Present.
Committee C. Allen.
Present.
President. Committee J. Rook.
Present.
President. Bud L. Williams.
Present.
President. Elena Ramos.
Present.
President. Marcus J. Williams.
Present.
Adam Gomez.
Present.
Thomas M. Ash.
Here.
Meveney Edwards.
Present.
President. Katie B. Walsh.
Here.
Here. Michael A. Fenton.
Present. Okay, Mr. Clerk, before we call the first item, are there any reports of committee this evening? Okay, seeing none, Mr. Clerk? Councilor Twigs.
I didn't know I was going to wait. I got to show the new members that I do it right. Supposed to take this up and put it out. Mr. President, early this evening, the city council, city clerk, a screening committee met with Attorney Anthony Wilson, the nominee for clerk. Present at the meeting was Counselor Katie Walsh, Council President Michael Fenton, Counselor Adam Gomez, Counselor Marcus Williams, and of course, yours truly. It was a very interesting meeting. We took time to vet Counselor, I mean Attorney Williams. We found out that, that he got his Bachelor of Art degree from Clark University and received his Juris Doctor degree from Suffolk University Law School in Boston. Very interesting person. He's had some work experience with the Suffolk County and Hampton County DA's office. He worked for the MCAD and the City Law Department. We know him well because he has served this body for a number of years. It is fair to say that no one was not very interested in him serving in another capacity other than counsel to the city council than those members who were there. I suspect many of you here tonight have the same feeling. But we are prepared to make the nominate Attorney Anthony Wilson to become our next I'll, do I get a second? I'll wait until it comes up.
You can take up the nomination at this time, if there's no objection, Mr. Clerk. If you could call item number 10.
I have here a nomination for election as a city clerk sponsored by Ward Ford Counselor, Counselor Twigs.
Do we have a nomination, Counselor Twigs?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a nomination?
Yes, I do. Mr. President, I nominate Attorney Anthony, Attorney Anthony I. Wilson. I was trying to think of his middle name.
Second.
As the next clerk of the city council.
Okay.
Thank you.
Name of Attorney Anthony Wilson has been put forward by Counselor Twigs and seconded by Counselor Rook. Are there any other nominations? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Clerk, if we can ask each counselor to say the name of their desired appointee to clerk?
This is for the...
Anthony I. Wilson.
Counselor Hurst.
Anthony Wilson.
Counselor Shea Epsom, Counselor...
Anthony I. Wilson.
Counselor Allen.
Anthony I. Wilson.
Counselor Rook. Counselor B. Williams.
Attorney Anthony Wilson.
Counselor Ramos.
Anthony Wilson.
Counselor M. Williams.
Anthony Wilson.
Counselor Gomez.
Anthony Wilson.
Counselor Ash.
Anthony Wilson.
Counselor Edwards.
Anthony Wilson.
Counselor Walsh.
Attorney Anthony Wilson.
Counselor Fenton.
Attorney Anthony I. Wilson. Mr. Clerk, will make that appointment effective January 29th? Is that the date of your retirement, Mr. Clerk?
Yes, it is, Counselor.
Okay, so, congratulations, Attorney Wilson.
I want to get out of here. Speech, 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 speech.
Can we have a... You'd like to make a few remarks? That would be an appropriate time.
I've given a number of speeches in the past couple of months. I just want to say thank you.
For yourself, no.
I look forward to working with you guys moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Attorney.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, item number one, please.
I have been ordered accepting a grant in the amount of $500,000 for the Police Department's Safe and Safe Initiative Youth Initiative Grant sponsored by the mayor.
Okay, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. President, Counselors. Brian Elliott, Springfield Police Department. This grant we applied for in the fall, and this is the Safe and Successful Youth Initiative. This is a brand-new opportunity for us. We started in 2012, closed that one out December 31st, and this funding here will pay for intervention services for the police department.
Any questions on the grant? All those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
Thank you.
Item number two, Mr. Clerk?
Item number two, I have been ordered, acceptance of fiscal year 16 health service for the homeless grant increased in the amount of $274,057 for the Health Department.
Good evening.
Good evening, and thank you very much. For the new counselors, Health and Human Services is home to a 330 health center called Health Services for the Homeless. We have sites on Worthington Street, and we have a site on Wilberham Road on the second floor of where Mason Square, near Wood Health Center is. This grant is to continue to provide medical and dental services to some of the city's most vulnerable individuals. Our partners are Mercy Medical Center as well as Open Pantry. So, I am here to ask that this grant be accepted.
Any questions on the grant? All those in favor of receiving the grant, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Item number three.
Item number three, I have here a transfer from the city clerk's and mayor's personal service in the amount of $63,369.
Okay, all those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Plant.
Thank you, Mr. President. This order before you tonight is to transfer money to replenish the personal services account in the clerk's office for the payout. That's going to be for the impending retirement of the city clerk, and also to replenish the mayor's office account for the resignation of the communications director and the replacement. Normally, we hold off replacing these positions until we have the money to pay the full payouts, but in these instances, we don't have the luxury of time to wait in between appointments for the clerk and then for appointing a new communications director.
Any questions? Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. President. TJ, could you just explain again why the mayor's office needed...
Yeah, when Jimmy Lyden resigned to take another position, we're entitled to pay out his vacation, his accrued vacation time. And since we didn't, normally, we would wait for any position, we'd wait and delay hiring until that, that money is recouped. In this case, we didn't wait, we, the mayor did not want to wait the extra time to appoint a new communications director.
So, was the, was that the, how much of the $63,000 was the accrued vacation time?
That, that is what that is. That is that number.
That's that number?
Yeah, so, I don't know how many weeks he had. I can get that for the council if you need it. It's whatever you accrued up, up until the time he resigned. No, $6,300 is the mayor's office. The other part's the clerk's number.
I mean, it's fine, in a way, but what's the policy on, is this, is this a payout as he leaves the city kind of thing?
Right, so, you accrue your vacation time at any job, that's something that we have to pay upon separation of service. So, he's accrued however many weeks this equates to, he's accrued that many weeks, and so...
So, is the vacation policy for the city allowed it stuff, just, is there any cutoff?
Yeah, one and a half times, I don't know when it went into effect, but one and a half times were your allotment, so if you get two weeks, you can accrue up to three weeks, then you stop accruing. If you get five weeks, you can accrue up to seven and a half weeks, and then you stop accruing. So, it all depends on years of service.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Mr. Clerk, roll call.
This is on granting a transfer of $63,369. Yes, votes for the transfer, and no votes against. Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea Epsom, Counselor Twigs.
Here.
Yes, Counselor Allen.
No.
No. Counselor Rook.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor P. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor M. Williams.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, matter passes. Mr. Clerk, items numbered four through seven, please.
Four through seven. I have here, I have here orders in the amount, a donation of goods to Larry Fire Serv- Firefighters Foundation in the amount of $11,500 to the Fire Department, item number four. Can't do five. I have here a vest assistance for TJO in the amount of $8,265 from the foundation, TJO Foundation. I have elderly affairs donation in the amount of $6,457.05 for the elderly affairs department from various individuals.
Okay. It appears as though number five was, to my error, put under grants, so this is to accept items four, six, and seven. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Clerk, item number five is not a grant, to your point, so let's take that up now.
I have here a budget transfer across department in the amount of $26,800 sponsored by the mayor for control office reserve for contingency to the Parks Department temporary salary.
All those in favor of suspension of Rule 19, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Mr. Plant.
Thank you, Mr. President, to the council. This transfer on, in January, January 1st, the minimum wage went up to $10 an hour. This is to bring the Parks Department in line with the new minimum wage, so we're looking for a transfer from reserve for contingencies to the Parks Department.
Any questions on the transfer? Mr. Clerk, roll call.
This is on the, the transfer across department of $26,880, Counselor Hurst.
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen? Yes, Counselor Shea? Epsom, Counselor Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor P. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor M. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, matter is approved. Item number eight, items numbered eight and nine, Mr. Clerk.
Item number eight, I have here a report from the Board of Public Works and order, an order regarding ever source to lay a conduit down Royal Drive, two new poles running 1,340 feet along the Wesley Drive to Industrial Avenue.
All those in favor of receiving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it.
I have here a report from the planning board regarding a zone change at 55 Emery and 6 Liberty Street. The recommendation is to approve. The hearing will be January 25th, 2016, at 7:00 PM.
All those in favor of receiving the report, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? The ayes have it. Okay, Mr. Clerk, items numbered 11, 13, 15, and 16 are all remaining in committee. I'm not sure about item number 14.
14.
14 as well. Okay, so, we really only have one item left. Item number 12, Mr. Clerk.
I have here an order for the school department, a five-year network contract sponsored by the mayor to allow the chief procurement officer to con, to award a contract for more than three years.
Okay. Anybody here speak? Mr. Foster. Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks, Mr. President, Counselors. We are requesting to execute a five-year contract for our WAN, our wide, our wide-area network in the school district. You do have some details in your package, and I'm happy to take questions, but in a nutshell, we have an opportunity, we have a company that's willing to come and lay fiber, to eat, fiber optic cable to each one of our schools, and the upshot for us is we'll have essentially 10 times the bandwidth to each one of our buildings for about the same price we pay now, a little bit less. But in order to do that, in order to sort of, you know, account for their costs, they want us to enter a five-year agreement to purchase our wide-area network services through the company, sort of, in order for them to make the upfront investment to lay the fiber, they want a five-year commitment that we're going to buy our services from them.
Is the school department going to pay for it?
Yes.
Any questions? Okay, Mr. Clerk, roll call.
This is on granting department to the chief procurement officer to have a contract more than five years. Yes, voters for the contract for more than five years, and no votes against. Counselor Hurst?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Shea? Epsom, Counselor Twigs?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Allen?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Rook?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor B. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ramos?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor M. Williams?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Gomez?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Ash?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Edwards?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Walsh?
Yes.
Yes, Counselor Fenton?
Yes, more insufficient, matter is approved. Mr. Clerk, any more business?
I have no further business later for the body tonight.
Okay, just under suspension, everybody, the 19th and the 20th, we have site plan review hearings. On the 19th, at 10:30 in the morning, there's a site walk with MGM on the site for anybody that wants to attend. There was an email that went around earlier today about parking. The hearing starts at 5:30 on the 19th, and then on the 20th, the hearing will continue at 7:00. On the 25th and 26th, we have hearings on the road closures and the host community amendments. And the 25th and the 26th are both at 5:30. Okay?
But the 19th, 5:30, 20th?
20th is at 7:00. So, the only one that is not at 5:30 is the 20th. That one is at 7:00.
Now, is this a continuation of the 19th?
That, and a, and a scheduling conflict for members, so...
Is there a way we're going to, how do you know if that part is going to be, is there going time limit or...
So, I'm, I'm not going to let any of the meetings go more than an hour and a half, and I'm going to put together a memo that says how long different parties will be allowed to speak before the hearings. So, you know, MGM will be allowed a certain amount of time, our consultants will be allowed a certain amount of time, and then each member of the public will get an allotted amount of time. And I'll, I'll put out a memo that speaks to that before the hearings, just so that we can find some way to, to have some rules about how to proceed.
What about President Avenue?
Yeah, there won't be any limit on our time. There won't be any limit on our time. What I, what I am going to do is I'm going to limit each meeting to an hour and a half, so if we get to an hour and a half and people still have a lot more questions, I'm just going to ask that we close the meeting and continue it the next day. If we're not able to meet this schedule and we need more meetings, I'll schedule as many as we need. But this is just what I tried to put forward as reasonable.
So, that would mean three hours total for site plan review?
That would mean three hours total for site plan review, yeah. Could be, I mean, if, if the body wants to make it longer, we can make it longer. That's just my proposal. I think, I think, though, before we do that, we should probably get into the hearing and get a feel for it, and if people say, okay, this feels right, then let's stick to it. And if people want to, you know, me to schedule another six meetings or cancel some meetings, we can do that, too. It's just, this is the proposal. And, and, and to be clear, on the 19th, I expect that that will largely be a meeting where the public, our consultants, and MGM make submissions and presentations to us, not a lot of interaction, and then I'm hoping that on the 20th, that's where we can really sit down with the consultants and say, well, what about this page? What about this design? What about this tower, or glass, or street, or what have you? And then make amendments at that time, just so we have some kind of organization to it.
I understand that. Five hundred public meetings, I think, with the amendment involved, and some of the alibi?
Yes, it'll also be, if, if we're able to complete the public testimony part the night before on the 19th, which starts at 5:30, then I will close the hearing, and on the 20th, that will be our opportunity to say, well, we want to change this, or we got a question about that. If everything goes according to plan, the 19th will end the public hearing on the site plan. The 20th, we'll have, hash it out in here with our consultants and with MGM. It's open to the public, but it just won't be open to public testimony, and no votes of, of a binding nature. And then on the 25th, we'll do the street closures, which is a public hearing, and deliberation, and then the host community amendments. And then on the 26th, what I'm proposing is that we take all the votes on that night, so we can draft the decisions in advance, and everybody can get a feel for what we want to do. If you want to make amendments to the site plan or things like that, we can do that before the final vote, though.
Well, the 25th, that we have a, we have a hearing then, so that will expire at 7:00 in the afternoon, or here.
Right.
The next night would be another hour and a half meeting.
Mm-hmm.
And at that point, if we need more time, we just close at that point.
Yeah. I mean, I think we'll know before the 26th if we're going to need more time.
Do you anticipate another handout or something for us, like before we get there? I mean, all we have is a post-meeting agreement from years ago, and we got some of the recent...
Oh, there's going to be a lot of documentation. The, the site plan will be very voluminous. That will be a submission. The amendments to the host community agreement, those are going to have to be spelled out, and specifically, the language will have to be written. For the road closures, we'll have a written report for the, from the Board of Public Works regarding their recommendation. Their hearing on the site is the 20th, so they will meet on the site on the 20th with the butters, and they'll make a written recommendation to us about the proposed road closures.
I think it would be great to have some of that documentation, and then all the options.
Me, too. It's just, they say it's not ready, so I don't have it. It's, it's just a matter of, you know, MGM and the city administration getting on the same page with what they want to put forward. Yes?
What is the option, the quiet decision, without taking over?
Based on what I'm proposing, it would all be done the 26th, on the last night. If there's a reason or desire to delay it, and people feel that four hearings isn't enough, we can always delay it, but I'm proposing that the 26th be the night that we do it.
I understand that. I understand that. We were told that a month or so ago, that two public, two time periods, two options run at the same time, once 30 days, once 45 days.
Yes. You don't have to worry about that anymore, because on the night, the day that we were sworn in, remember, we opened the hearing and Counselor Shea made a motion to continue it? That took care of the timetable. That took care of the timetable. We don't got to worry about it anymore, because what we did was we opened the hearing and we continued it. The law says that the hearing has to begin, not that it has to end within those time periods that you're talking about.
Also, to this point, my colleague's point, if we did it following this, we are... We go beyond what he said. It's not a big problem.
No problem whatsoever.
No.
I think there'll be some frustrated people, but, I mean, it's not, you know...
Not us.
No. We can go beyond, and, you know, we've never sat a site plan approval authority. We've never done anything like this, so this is my best guess at how we can approach it. If people want more time, we can always have that. You know, if we get into the site plan hearing on the first night, and there's not a lot to talk about, and we've... Everybody's in agreement, and we're done, then I can cancel the second meeting. Now, I've got no reason to think that that'll take place. I got a lot of questions myself, but this is just my best first attempt at what we should do. And I am going to have rules for the hearing, which will be distinct from our council rules and what we usually do, because I think that this is, for obvious reasons, an exception to how we should approach it. So on the first night, MGM will open up. They'll present, and I haven't put out this document yet, but they'll present for about a half hour. That's what I'm going to give them. And then the consultants, our consultants from Chicago, will be here, both the legal and the planning, and I've coordinated the schedule so that they can be here with Mr. Kennedy. And they'll present for about a half hour, and then we'll hear from the public. So that'll leave about a half hour for public testimony. If we need more than that, then I won't close the hearing on the 19th. I'll let it roll over into the 20th, and we'll begin the 20th with the public hearing to allow the public to finish up, and then we'll close it, and then we can hash it out with our consultants and say, why'd you make this recommendation? Why didn't we do it this way, et cetera? That's what I sort of have envisioned.
So are there two votes that were the site approval? And those were here?
There's three votes. There's the site plan approval, which is the design. There's the road closures, which also requires a public hearing, just like the site plan. And then there's the host community amendments. All three of those are majority votes. You know, if the council wants to take them up piecemeal and vote them on individual nights, you know, we can hash that out now, and I can entertain that, but, you know, my suggestion is that we wait until the 26th. Mainly, and the main reason for that is a legal one. The law department has to draft decisions based on our discourse, and, you know, the clerk does a wonderful job of keeping notes and trying to say what we're basing our decision on on a night-to-night basis. This is a really important decision, so we want to make sure that the law department has sufficient time, even if it's just a day or two, to write a good decision so that when we vote it, it's not just, you know, Wayman's Notes.
Has any of these three steps been voted, the main commission or mayor?
No. Well, the mayor. The mayor's approved.
You have all three?
The mayor has no authority over the street closures, so his permission wouldn't be sought for that, but the mayor has assented to the site plan and the host community amendments. That's my understanding.
Was he assented to this?
This is being put forward to us, you know, yeah, pursuant to that. So...
Is he got the documents? They said the documents weren't ready. Will he be approved? Will he have consented if he gets it?
Well, I guess that's an interesting question. I would defer that one to the law department. I can tell you that it wouldn't come before us without the mayor's blessing. Those two things would not come before us without the mayor's blessing. So I understand that he's supportive of the concept, and I also understand that, you know, it's difficult to draft all this stuff, and the amendments, and the site plan submissions and things of that nature. So some of the submissions will be electronic. We've arranged to have some technology that'll be available here, a smart board that'll be different than what we're used to, and some of it will be tangible in paper form. It's important to note, I just want to remind everybody, that if you miss a portion of the hearing, you could jeopardize your ability to later participate in the vote. And I do not want to be the one in a position for deciding who can and can't vote based on who is here at what time and splitting hairs, because it's... The law is gray on it, and there's a high likelihood of appeal. So we want to make sure that, you know, everybody's here so you can vote. Hearings on the 19th, you know, the 20th will be deliberation. I mean, I would hesitate to say which one. If you miss a substantial portion of any of them, you're jeopardizing your ability to vote on the 26th. Let me just put it that way. Marcus?
Is that the order of the vote? Might it be the vote of the 26th?
Not necessarily, but that'll be the order of the hearings. That will be the order of the hearings in which we take them up. It might not necessarily be the order of the vote on the 26th. I'll have to consult with the law department about how to do that.
Is the consultant... Are they still available? Do we have that video? Do we have that video? Are they still available?
The consultants are available. Yeah, I mean, if any counselor wishes to speak to the consultants, I would contact Mr. Kennedy. He's been good about arranging for meetings with our legal consultants from Chicago and our planning consultants from Chicago. Our traffic consultants are right here in West Springfield, so they're available, and they will be in attendance at these hearings. I'm not sure that the planning consultants from Chicago will be here for the road closures and the final vote, but I know they'll be here for the site plan, because that's really their bellywick. And the legal consultants, Sid Froelich and his team, many of you will remember, they will be here for all four. So this was difficult to schedule based on, you know, a lot of things, people away and a lot of different schedules, but that's what we've got.
Mr. President, do we have anything on this street or something, that this party decides to...